I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Yummet Hill County Board of Commissioners March 17, 2021. I'd like to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to rank everyone that this is a public meeting, that we are keeping both a written and a video record of our proceedings. We will begin with awards, recognitions, and correspondence. Do we have any? I haven't seen my colleagues on there yet. Commissioner Doran or Commissioner Schaefer, do you have any awards or recommendation, uh, rec- recognition items? Why are they all of a sudden being quiet? What? What is that? It looks like a manger from here. Commissioner Doran or Commissioner Schaefer, are you there?
I am, I'm here.
I'm just sitting here patiently waiting.
Oh, all right. Well, you've all of a sudden gone quiet, so. Didn't know what to do. So, do you have any awards, recognition, or correspondence?
Uh, I would like to recognize Sheriff Rowland's appointment to the Public Safety Board.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schaefer?
No, I do not.
Okay. Uh, we have minutes of March 3, 2021.
Make a motion to adjourn for a minute?
Is there a second?
Second. Um, what about the pledge to?
Oh. We did all that. I don't know where, I don't know where you were at the time, but we called it to order and, and did the pledge and, and all that, apparently before you were, uh, connected.
Don't mind what I'm saying.
No, no.
I didn't, I didn't hear that either, so, okay.
Did I get a second to the motion on the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Aye, approved. All right. Uh, is there any public input regarding the, the, anything that isn't on the agenda? All right. Then we'll move into our business items. We have 15 business items on the agenda. There's no additions, I understand?
No, that's my order.
Okay. Our first item is ambulance service boundary changes. Counsel, are you going to tell us about that?
I can introduce it. I believe Tom Roberts and Chief Stanton might have something to say. Basically, what the request is before the Board of Commissioners is to adjust two ASA boundaries. Currently, uh, these, these two properties are within the Yummet Hill County Fire District number one boundaries, but are served for ambulances. Uh, the north parcel in red by ASA five and the southern one in green by ASA one. And what the proposal is to take them out of both of those ASAs and put them in ASA two. So that they are, the services to those two parcels are provided by Yummet Hill County Fire District number one.
Commissioners?
I would move for approval of the adoption of ordinance number 2021-022.
Well, I have a second, but I want to visit with Chief Stanton a bit. Is he, did you think he was in the room or on the phone?
He, it was my understanding he was invited, and this is also.
He's on the, yeah, there he is.
And this is also an ordinance, so it's a public hearing before we adopt it.
Is there a reason why we can't see?
So, hi Chief, I didn't know. Can you speak to this? Are you in favor of this one?
Uh, yeah, you know, we had, we've had a couple ASA meetings, and basically what's going on is this was in our fire district, Yummet Hill County Fire District number one, when we consolidated this annual furnace business on some of that new ground we added to some protected lands. A lot of the rockers in that area. The, the area in red is in ASA five, which is basically many 400s area. So right now, those, that one place right there is getting double taxed by us and by them. So for them, it'll be a reduction of a dollar a thousand, and they'll only pay our taxes for fire. And I believe we can probably get there quicker than many 400 go down to the. The parcel in green is served by Pelton Ambulances. Uh, they are in, you know, man's, they're in our fire district, and again, I think we can get there quicker too than Pelton can. And so it's just a matter of aligning lines so that these two areas would be in our fire district completely. And so for some, it'd be saving some tax money, and just basically, all the chiefs met, and we can believe in obviously providing the best service to our community members, no matter who do that. We just want the best service to those folks, and we believe that I can do that best since I have a station that can give them their ISO rating, or, and my office, my, uh, each station can get there fairly fast.
So, are that where the walls road stations got?
Uh, that's for the closest fire station. My closest 24/7 staff station is there that intersects the Pumping Center and Dial there, Station 22.
Got you.
That's still closer. No, I, I agree with that. Uh, the only, my only caution is I wanted to make sure that the 911 center got the information of the change so that they could adjust their masks for, for golf making.
And Sheriff Rowland and Karen Primmer were both in the room, as well as Senator Sheriff Littlefield, so, uh, yeah, once you guys make this, I can either let Karen know or somebody can, or Tom Roberts can, so yeah, I think.
Yeah, I see Tom in the room, so. Okay. Those are the only things I wanted to bring up, so I'm, I'm, I'm ready to vote unless the other commissioners have questions.
Before you vote, you need to open up a public hearing.
Oh. Okay, well, uh, before we vote, we'll, we'll have a public hearing on the matter. We'll open it to a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this that hasn't spoken already? Anybody who wishes to speak against? All right, we'll go out of hearing and accept a motion.
We have the motion already, is that right?
Yes, and second.
Were we in hearing or not?
Okay, we had the hearing.
So do we have to get another motion?
No.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That's ordinance number 2021-22. All right, second item on the agenda is solid waste disposal site.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Wolder, County Planning Director. Uh, so the item before you is for your approval of a DEQ application. JSH Farms has applied for a solid waste disposal site, um, permit with DEQ for a composting operation located on some of their property at map 5N, 30, section 27, and is located on tax lot 1304. This operation would be associated with their farming activities on their own property, and however, DEQ is requiring them to submit an application for a solid waste disposal site since they would be composting this material. Earlier last month, our department held a public meeting. We did not have any attendees outside of the applicant and county staff that attended that, that meeting. Uh, but the next step really is, uh, in order for DEQ to approve the applicant's request, they have to submit written comments from the local solid waste planning authorities regarding the proposed new solid waste disposal facilities, compatibility with the local solid waste management plan. And our solid waste advisory committee, or SWAC, met earlier this week and did determine that the, um, plan appears to be consistent with the county's solid waste management plan. So with that, we're seeking your approval of the advisory committee's recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I need your approval.
I'd second it with, with limited questions from, from myself. Planning Director Paul, my one question is that in the, in the, um, statement, it says that, that if they have, if there were enough compost remaining after our own need for that, we would sell wholesale to other area farmers? And they, will, will they be able to stockpile it on the other area of farmers' property, or will they have to stockpile it on their own property and then move it upon spreading it to other farmers?
All of that would qualify as a farm use, so if, if other farmers chose to, um, use that material in a certain manner, um, that would all be considered accessory to their farming operation.
Perfect, I, I'm glad to hear that. All right, thank you.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number three is a STIF plan update. Bob, is that you too?
I believe Stacy's on the, the call here. Stacy, it looks like you're on mute.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So after Yummet Hill County STIF plan was submitted to ODOT, they discovered that we had, um, there was about $200,000 in unprogrammed carryover. So after consultation with Frank Thomas, ODOT rep, and STIF Advisory Committee, you would like to increase our system sustainability project on the STIF plan, and that would bring that amount to 575,000. The thoughts were that if there's any projects that need additional funding during the fiscal year 2022 or 2023, that, um, you know, different providers could provide, could also access the system sustainability money for those projects. So we are seeking your approval to update this STIF plan and resubmit that to ODOT. Any questions?
None. None of these have pink.
I'll go ahead and take a motion for approval, um, of the STIF, uh, or the order number BCC, or BCC 2021-023. Stacy, real, real quick, can you give a kind of a overview of what a sustainable project might be?
When they set this, the, uh, system policy up, it was to kind of like, to provide an investment fund, to provide financial security in the event of an economic downturn, or to leverage additional capital or operating dollars for projects. And the projects that I'm talking about would have to already been STIF projects, already approved STIF projects.
But we've already approved this, this cycle of STIF projects, correct?
Yes, yes. This is just an increase to only that one line item, the system sustainability line item. We're increasing it.
Okay, will, will we be able to tap those dollars for projects that have, haven't been approved but have been submitted, um, if there, if there's matching funds or at least leverage funds?
Yes, um, we would be able to, yeah, they would have to come before the STIF Advisory Committee's of the request, and yes.
Thanks, Stacy.
Yes.
Okay, there's a BCC order 2021-023. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Board of Property Tax Appeals, summary of actions.
Good morning, Commissioners. The panel I here before you is the actions, the results of the property tax board of, Board of Property Tax petition, now I got all messed up. Board of Property Tax assessment. The results, we had 23 people that have petitions, two were withdrawn, 11 of them were stipulated, and then we had 10 that went before the board, and four of those were actually, the amounts were reduced by the board, and it just needs to be approved. So for you is just the acceptance of the actions taken by the Board of the Property Tax Appeals.
Mr. Chair, I need approval for adoption of BCC 2021-022.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you. All right, the next item is a fair payable.
I would move for approval of the fair, uh, approval requested action of $9,000 on the deposit for entertainment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item is a public health payable. This is the, uh, COVID radio ads, is Joe on? All right. These are radio ads relative to, to COVID. I believe these are the ones that are in Spanish, is that correct?
I don't believe this one.
Okay, but anyway, they're, they're advertisements from the public health department, uh, relative to our COVID outreach efforts, so is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Kim, I saw you on there for the next item, a CDD payable.
Good morning. So I'm here before you to ask for approval of payment of $26,785. This actually is a, um, will be reimbursed by the state. We just need to pay, uh, give the invoice, and the state, uh, pays us back. It is actually for a vehicle modification, and that amount, just for interesting fact, that amount actually does not include the actual vehicle. That is the modification only. It is extremely expensive to modify vehicles for, um, people with physical and/or developmental disabilities.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of this action. However, I do think that Kim needs to introduce herself for the record.
I'll sec, I'll second it and, and wait for the introduction also.
Kim.
Kim White, Blue Program Manager, Yummet Hill County Developmental Disabilities Program.
Thank you, Kim. This is order number TX. This is order number TX 2021-01. All in favor say aye?
That's the next item. That's the next item, that order.
Oh, is that the next item?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
You had a available.
Thank you. Got ahead of myself. All right, now we're going to consider item, order number TX 2021-01, which is authorization to auction property. Counsel?
Okay, this is coming before the board for the approval for the annual auction for tax-burcled properties. Uh, this includes all the ones that were, uh, the 2021 that were foreclosed on this year, and the one that was from last year, it's the Lotus Mobile Home Park. So we hopefully will have that sale on May 4. And so it's before the board for to approve the auction for those 22 parcels.
I would make a motion to approve, um, order TX 2021-01, and at the same time, I would like to thank, um, Doug and the legal, and also the planning department to go through these with me and, and provide explanations and go through each individual also. Thank you.
Sorry.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Sale of property, TX 2021-02.
Uh, this is coming before the board for approval to resell a tax-burcled property to the contract purchaser of property. This was one of them that was foreclosed on this year, and the county took title. After we took title, it was discovered that occupants had an unrecorded contract and didn't actually receive notice until the very end. And so what this is doing is enabling the county to sell it back to the, uh, unrecorded contract purchaser for the amount of taxes that were unpaid when it was foreclosed on.
Chair, I need adoption for TX 2021-02.
I second the motion. A question to counsel, was the unrecorded contract, was that a lease contract or rent contract or a purchase contract?
It was actually a bill of sale for the manufactured structure, and it included the plans along with it. There were two of them, and so the current occupant was actually two removed from the one that we were providing notice to. And what they had done is that they had cashed out the previous owner and were in the, making the payments on the trust deed on the property.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Item number 10 is River Road Utility.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Bell, Yummet Hill County Public Works Director. Before you is a request for an order for relocation of loop utilities in the, within the project area on River Road, uh, just north of 11th Street. We, uh, actually contacted all the utilities, uh, early on, and one of the, of the utilities seems to have a problem with the, the schedule. So we're simply wanting to make sure that the, uh, board is, uh, in tune with this so that we have the leverage to, um, make them move that utility in a timely fashion not to pull up the project, um, from moving forward its completion.
I, I would move approval for order number RD 2021-01. Questions?
Second.
Tom, or, um, Public Works Director, I'll post, uh, but does this go the full length of the project?
Uh, yeah, the, the current utility, my, my understanding is it crosses over, currently it crosses over, um, just to the north of the existing project and runs down the west side of the road. The, the utility wants, is actually going to, to put it, uh, continue it down the, uh, east side of the road to 11th Street and cross it over there, so it's, the, uh, actually moving the utility works better for them in the long run anyway. So yes, to, short answer is yes, it does run the full length of the project.
If, if it comes to the point where you guys just lay it down, do you have to lay it across, um, River Road? Hopefully, hopefully that's not the case, but it is.
No, no, if, if it would, uh, if it would get in the way of, of the project moving forward, my assumption would be that, that the project would be held up and the utility company then would be come responsible for the liquidated damages that would be held against the contractor in this, uh, that, uh, I'd probably need a little confirmation from Doug on that, but I, I believe that that's the way that that would work, is, is we wouldn't, um, we, we wouldn't actually be responsible for doing any relocation, we'd just be responsible for, um, making sure they paid liquidated damages.
Got you, I mean, that's kind of what I assume. Thanks, Paul.
And actually, the plan on this case is they're going to leave the current one abandoned in place and put the new one in through borrowing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Did I get a motion?
You did have a motion now.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, all right. The next item is. Yes. Did you say something?
Say thank you.
Oh, thank you, Tom. All right, item number 11 is vehicle lease.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. This is Jim Littlefield, Under Sheriff, Yummet Hill County Sheriff's Office. Uh, this request is to lease a Jeep Grand Cherokee for our fleet. Uh, the backstory, uh, in November last year, as part of our, uh, annual leases for vehicles, we ordered a Jeep Grand Cherokee, uh, much to our surprise when we received the vehicle recently. It was not a Jeep Grand Cherokee, it was a Jeep Cherokee, which is a smaller vehicle and not the right tool for the job. Robert Paul thankfully found another place for the Cherokee in the county fleet, and so we are requesting, uh, permission to, um, order and receive the correct vehicle in this action today.
I would move for approval of the lease of a Jeep Grand Cherokee, uh, the Sheriff's Department.
I would second that.
Any discussion?
The only question I have would be to Robert is the $15,260, is that set aside, separately in this budget and then the next budget, or do we approve that while in the first one? And Robert's not here, is he?
Right, this is, this is Marie, I'm speaking for Robert. Marie Simonas, Assistant Director of Budget and Finance. Dan, the leasing is, um, budgeted per year, so, um, depending on how we pay for it, if it's an annual payment, it would be budgeted for that fiscal year. If it's a, if it's an upfront for the entire lease, and I'm not sure what those are, it would be, it would be, um, expensed in that way. Makes sense?
Yep, sure does. Thanks for that.
Uh-huh.
Actually, I thought it went the other way, so thank you.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, the next item, item 12, is, um, approve amended policy 4.3B for COVID-19 emergency leave policy. Jennifer, are you going to present this?
I sure can. Jennifer Blake, Human Resources Director. Before you today is a request to extend the COVID sick leave pay through June of this year. We're hoping by then, a good deal of the population, including our employees, will be able to be vaccinated. Until then, we would like to extend that leave to help with any employees that, that may be exposed to COVID and also protect our workforce by doing so.
Questions of Jennifer? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I need approval.
I would second the motion.
Okay, all in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
All right, item 13, we'll go into hearing mode for supplemental budgets. Mrs. Simonas?
Good morning. Uh, before you, we have, um, seven supplemental budgets and one transfer for your consideration. Uh, the first one is budget order number 2021-31, general fund. The general fund, uh, the general county program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of $335,000 and a decrease in contingency of $335,000. Budget order number 2021-32, STIF program. The STIF program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $80,000 and a decrease in contingency of $80,000. Budget order number 2021-33, human services, SE 66. The SE 66 program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $45,000 and an increase in materials and services of $45,000. services of $45,000. Budget order number 2021-31, human services, alcohol, drug, and gambling services. The alcohol, drug, and gambling services program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of $96,000, an increase in state revenue of $85,000, an increase in materials and services of $112,000, and an increase in contingency of $69,000. Budget order number 2021-35, economic development reserve. The economic development reserve program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers of $300,000 and an increase in contingency of Budget order number 2021-37, assessment taxation. The assessment taxation program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in cash of $50,000, an increase in local revenue of $145,000, and an increase in materials and services of $195,000. Budget order number 2021-38, court security program. The court security program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers of $35,000 and an increase in personnel services of $35,000. And the one transfer for your consideration is budget order number 2021-36, community services development. The community services development program requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $15,000 and a decreasing contingency of $15,000. Any questions?
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
Any problem?
All right, we're in hearing mode still. Is there any comments relative to any of these budget orders? Any comments from the public? Any comments from staff? There being none, we will go out of hearing mode, and I will accept motions one by one.
I would defer to the dulcet tones of my colleague Commissioner Doran to do the make motions, I'll just second them all.
That's fine. I move to accept budget order 2021-31, general county.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to accept budget order 2021-32, the STIF program.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve budget order 2021-33, human services.
Second.
On favor say aye. All right.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to accept budget order 2021-34, human services.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to accept budget order 2021-35, economic development reserve.
Second.
On favor say aye.
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 I'd like to make a motion to accept budget order 2021-37, assessment and taxation.
On favor say aye. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Schaefer.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to accept budget order 2021-38, court security program.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, did we do all seven?
Yeah.
It seemed like we missed one, okay. All right, budget transfers.
I think we already heard from the budget transfer from Marie, didn't we?
Yes, there was one to approve, that was the very last thing.
Okay, thank you, Marie.
Yeah.
All right, item 15 is a.
We got approval.
No, I make, I make a motion that we accept budget order 2021-36, community service development.
Sorry about that, sorry.
On favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
I thought we were missing one. Marie, are we done with financial matters?
Yes, we are, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, Marie.
Then we shall move on to item number 15, which is being brought to us, wait a minute.
County management.
What's the personnel policies here?
That was already done.
We already did it? Yeah, some of these are out of order, okay.
Ah.
All right. We are on item 15, which is being brought to us by Commissioners Schaefer and Doran. Would either of you like to speak to this letter?
So with the EOC, we had our meeting the other day, and this letter came up, it was drafted by the Union County Emergency Manager, and it was, and Chair, the Chair of the EOC is Commissioner Paul Anderson, Union County, and he brought it up to the attention, saying, hey, if you'd like to sign on to this letter, let us know. And I immediately jumped at the chance to sign the letter, as I believe Commissioner Doran did as well. This, this letter is perfectly what my thoughts are on the matter, and, and Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to read the letter.
Yes, we have, I think we have sufficient time, and I think it'd enlighten the audience, if you would.
Okay. The letter is actually drafted by Governor Brown and Director Pat Allen of Oregon Health Authority, as well as Director Andrew Phelps of Oregon Emergency Management. It says, Governor Brown and districters colleagues, this task has been challenging for all involved. COVID-19 has stripped resources as we continue to learn more about the disease, all while the incident continued to evolve. We have learned a tremendous amount about all aspects of public health, emergency response, public health, and emergency management systems have been tested. We have come a long way since early 2020 when the incident began. For the reasons detailed below, it is time for management of the COVID-19 incident to be returned to the local level. The Oregon Emergency Management System is designed to be operated at the local level as stated in ORS 401.032, and two in parentheses. Two, it is declared with the policy of intent of a website assembly that preparations for emergency and governmental responsibility for responding to emergencies be placed at the local level. The state shall prepare for emergencies and shall not assume authority or responsibility for responding to an emergency unless the appropriate causes the occupancy of the city and county in which emergency. If either county fails to act or the emergency involves fewer more counties. State-wide coordination was a priority given the early COVID-19 incident when management implemented the stick-up. The incident has stabilized, which is evidenced by the fact that both Oregon Emergency Management and the Oregon Health Authority are no longer in emergency operation. An incident action plan or situation report related to COVID-19 has not issued by OEM or OHA since fall of 2020. Prior to fall of 2020, OHA split down their incident management team and transferred long-term management of the incident to the COVID-19 response every unit, the CRRU, and OEMs stood down the Emergency Coordination Center, or the ECC. COVID-19 activation, OHA staff outside of the CRRU have returned to their regular job and have been directed that they are no longer engaged in the COVID-19 response. OHA has increased their personnel to allow for COVID-19 response and recovery to be addressed in the capacity. Oregon Emergency Management has implemented a small virtual ECC activation in support of vaccination effort. State agencies continue to be in critical performance in support of county operations. However, their tasks are in support of county operations and supporting emergency operations have long since ceased. Over the past year, counties have developed and affirmed key capability and cemented the necessary relationships to successfully manage the incident locally. Counties are well exercised and experienced in all response aspects within existing capacity. The Biden administration has granted additional local funding with enough flexibility to allow additional resources and staffing to be acquired and to be necessary. Vaccination operations are well underway, and examples of efficient effective vaccine administration bound, limited only by vaccine availability, which is a variable outside all of our control, does as and will continue to play a key role in resources for technical expertise, which is the conditional role during emergency operations. Counties are in a key position to evaluate local conditions such as case counts, positivity rate, local hospital capacity, hospital system capacity, outbreak clusters, and available resources, while also placing those factors in context with regional, state, and national situation. With continued success, we have been able to, one, minimize hospitalizations and deaths; two, avoid overwhelming the healthcare system; three, protect those at highest risk of severe illness, especially the elderly, those with underlying health conditions and communities of color; four, minimize the risk of frontline workers; and five, allow people to return to work so they can support themselves in their families. Just as school districts have taken the lead in determining how state guidance applies within their jurisdictions, counties are planning or prepared to do the same. As previously stated, we will be managing the incident at a local level, and if either local activity is suspended or the incident escalates beyond local involvement. We will continue to depend on the state for technicalities and logistical support. Thank you for your ongoing efforts, and that's the end of the letter.
Do either of you have any idea what kind of response? I was not able to attend the EOC meeting because I had a conflict, and I understand there's other counties that have since emerged. Do you have any idea how many counties in the state are likely to sign on?
I have not heard that figure.
I, I know it's quite a few, I just don't know the figure.
I had heard yesterday that some on the coast, and it's primarily rural counties that are responding, so just was curious if you had heard anything. All right.
It may be expanding beyond rural, due to yesterday's late discussions.
Okay. Do I have a motion that the county supports this letter?
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Additional comments from Commissioners?
I have none.
I have none.
We're adjourned.